So we will start, as always, with public forum and if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak now would be the opportunity for that. We're here for the resolution. So seeing no one, I will close public forum at seven oh one ish. The next item is for the town council to consider the minutes and so we have the minutes from September fourth and I would accept a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the town council minutes from September fourth, twenty nineteen.
I just don't see any. Um, it was on line fifty-three, fifty-four. And it just, I just wasn't sure if this was accurate. It said, he said the town attorney found a reference to a section of the town charter at the beginning of one articles which does not exist and has trig. Does that sound accurate to you?
It's, there was a reference, there was a reference in one of the amendments of Article twelve, but there is no longer an Article twelve because that was removed during the last charter commission. That's all it is.
Okay. I feel like that's confusing to all of us maybe, so if you gave some guidance.
Yep. Yep.
And that was my only change.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, town chair. The first item is that just while everyone is interviewing contract law firms at the end of September, we've been getting their underwood engineering for a number of years now. It's always a good practice to go through the process to rebid the services, so we're doing that now. We're interviewing three firms next Thursday and we'll have a contract for the council to approve after the process. Uh, just to let the public know that the town clerk can now provide hunting and fishing licenses as well as register certain recreational vehicles. This will add additional revenues to the town. And I didn't mean to put one falls over, should be with summer over. We begin the plan for town meeting. As you know, I must provide the council with a budget by October fifteenth. Department heads now out their worksheets and are working diligently on their budgets. Uh, the council will then have this Saturday workshop twenty-sixth, beginning usually around nine AM. Wrapping up between one and two. Uh, what we do is every department comes in and council can ask questions on their appropriations. I've looked at the calendar and if there's no objections, we're going to schedule deliberative session for Saturday, February first. And talking with the superintendent of schools, we thought there's a big opportunity if it's ready to show off the high school auditorium by holding it there. Uh, and election day is March tenth for your calendars. The next item is that the New Hampshire Municipal Association's annual conference will be November thirteenth and fourteenth in Manchester. I know a couple of councils have gone in the past and if you're interested, please email Wendy so we can register you and we will cover the cost for that. I have two items just to give updates that are not in my written report. First is many people know we have installed and is operating, are operating the electric vehicle charging station at the library. Since the first day, we've had actually a number of people using it. I know there's a lot of misconceptions and I also want to say I don't usually, um, lack of a better term, govern towards social media, but I wanted to just clarify some social misconceptions that are out there. One is that why we are not charging. As I mentioned to the council before, the cost of actually running the credit card machine is greater than giving the electricity out for reg, for paying for the electricity. So it actually costs us money if we charge them versus just giving them the eighty-six cents an hour that it costs. Also, we look at it as a economic development tool. If somebody's going to be coming into town to register, I mean to charge their vehicle, they're not going to be sitting in their vehicle for that time. They're probably going to be visiting some of the local businesses downtown. We're still in a monitoring stage. We don't know how many people are going to use it. It seems like it's being pretty successful at this time. Just anecdotally, the librarian says she's had a number of new library cards issued since putting in the charger. Um, but if it becomes costly, yeah, we'll look at charging, but at this point, um, it just was not, didn't make sense to have a higher fee for the credit card versus the cost of the actual electricity. Um, we are going to be painting that spot green and have assigned it's electric, uh, electric vehicle only. Uh, no vehicles will be able to park there overnight. The law is still the law as it relates to parking. So five AM to, uh, five AM to one AM is only hours you're allowed to park. Uh, we will not permit that park in spot. So you can't live in one of the mills and have a spot, you know, try to park there at night. So, uh, just want to clarify those things. Again, this is, we're trying this out. And the people say, well, there's other communities that do charge. Portsmouth and Dover charge, but they also have parking garages and they have systems in place where they're already collecting fees for parking and they just added an additional fee onto that. Um, and what we looked at was Durham and that's where we were looking at the price and like, well, it doesn't really make sense for, to charge at this point in time. The other item that we're continuing to work on is the Weaver's Row being one way. Uh, I understand a number of vehicles have been going the wrong way. It's going to take a while. We're still, we haven't done all the signage yet. We wanted to make sure that that was the best flow of traffic. As if anybody has gone by recently, those spots are being used. Um, I'm pleasantly surprised that, you know, once they're there, they're there, they're there. I would like to see maybe the cars realize that if you see two sets of headlights facing you, you shouldn't go that way, but it'll take a little bit. If we continue that route, we'll probably be painting arrows in the street to make sure people realize it's one way and, um, the other signage when it comes there. But again, we're trying it out right now to make sure it's the right way because once you put paint down on the ground, it's very difficult to take it up. Uh, signage is easy. You can just move signs. So we want to make sure we just, people, we want to make sure that the parking was going to work before anything and it seems like it is. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the town administrator? Oh, thank you, Counsel Cast.
Uh, I'll just comment that I, last time I walked up there or actually drove through the Newbury parking lot, their exit sign on the parking lot side, not on the street side, says turn right to exit back to Main Street.
We do not own that sign.
I know, but I, I've.
We would, I think once we're finished, that will work with the owner of it.
That might, yeah, it just might be contributing to some of the confusion because I think the original intent was that they would just make a U-turn and go out.
Yeah. Correct. And we're asking them either to take a right onto Main Street or go through Elm Street.
And once you make a right, because I did that to try it out, like you said, there's no signs to tell you where to go, how to get out. So, yeah.
Um, I don't see any other, um, oh, Counsel Finch.
Very minor question. What's the deadline to register for the conference?
Usually like a week before.
Okay, so we're good.
November. It really is. Um, I have a couple items, mostly from the department, well, all from the department reports. Um, the first thing that I wanted to mention was just a public thank you to the Department of Public Works and to, um, Rick Malaski. Uh, reading his report, I know that normally the fall can be, I mean, every season is busy, but the fall has its own unique challenges and on top of that, they've been working on the Leverland Creek culvert. And so I know that they've been especially, and then we asked them to, you know, install car charging stations and, and get reports done and that kind of thing. So I, I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge them.
Can I add one thing? You brought up an item that I want to make the public also aware.
Yeah.
Was it, it deals with Leverland Creek project. We've closed the road for a reason, that it's a public safety issue that we're trying to fix the culvert. We have cameras out there now because cyclists are just taking their bikes and going over the fence to go around an active construction site. That's trespassing. We would, if anybody knows any cyclists that are doing that, if they are caught, they will be prosecuted. We do not want to have anybody hurt by going through a construction site. So I just want everybody to know that as well.
Thank you. Um, the, another item that I had was the, the outfall pipe issues that, um, were in the, uh, water department's, um, report and, um, it mentioned a cost of two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So is that something that we can expect to see a resolution for soon? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and then I have one third item and that was in the police report. And, um, I just wanted to make mention of it because I think it's important. Um, you know, I, I like to read through these reports and there's, there's a lot of information in them. Um, and this was in reference to the incident with the student, um, at the school. And I guess I just want to, I don't know, first of all, thank the police department for, um, the work that they did because at the time it felt like maybe it wasn't that serious of an incident. Um, you know, the rumors, you know, I have a child around that age and so there were some rumors, oh, there's a picture posted on social media. And you kind of think like, oh, okay, a fifteen-year-old or sixteen-year-old might post an inappropriate picture on social media. I certainly know that my kids are not above that. Um, but when I read the report, um, from the chief and it specifically said obtained evidence seized firearms and made an arrest without incident, I think it just brought the gravity of the situation into focus. So I just wanted to again highlight the work of the, of the police department. Um, and also obviously that came from a report. And so whoever reported that, you know, I'm just thankful for, for that, whether that was, I don't know if it was a child or a student, or a student or an adult. Um, but I'm just thankful that they reported it and it was dealt with. So that was all I had. So moving on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Oh, Counsel Burns.
Um, the CIP committee just met prior to our meeting tonight. Um, this evening we heard, we got through all of the presentations, so, which is great. Um, and so we will, our next meeting will be Wednes, next Wednesday. We're going to start at three thirty, go till six and our deliberations will take place at that point. So, see how far we get. We aren't meeting tomorrow night, just.
Uh, Counsel Cast.
Uh, the planning board met, let's see, last Tuesday and we just reviewed, you know, the, the outstanding to do, which is to schedule our joint meeting and they, they understood that the research on the economic development plan was going to be best to, to kind of complete that phase before meeting with them so that it would be better aligned, our agenda.
We're looking at sometime in October.
Okay. All right. Who, who would they look to to schedule that with?
I've talked to the community development director.
Okay.
Schedule it.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Counsel Sanders.
I, um, met with the New Market Business Association, so we had the strategic planning meeting and I shared with them the EV charger. Even we hadn't yet, and we totally overlooked everybody else. I also shared the date for the conversations with the counselors that's coming up. And they are trying to form an art committee now to look at doing some art installations such as painting on sides of buildings. Um, similarly seen Dover or in, um, the Pene. Um, and they're looking for somebody to chair that. I just, I asked me, I asked them. I'm sure they would take a effort and they can be just as well.
Just a question. Are they looking for a counselor to chair that or just a member of the community?
Well, when council is part of, you know, as, as the town already members.
Member of the New Market Business Association, um, I think it was kind of thrown out to.
I wasn't wanting to chair with someone else.
Someone else like to step up.
Thank you. And seeing no others, we are on to the next item of business, which is the resolution twenty nineteen, twenty twenty oh two, the community church LCHIP application. I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash zero two endorsing New Market Community Church LCHIP application.
Second.
Yeah, okay.
We, the, the New Market Community Church has made an application to the New Hampshire LCHIP program. Um, for those who don't know what that is, that's the moose plate and the monies that raise that go to help preserve, uh, historical buildings. Part of the application process is that the local government must endorse, um, the application and that's what this part is. We have no other part of it than just endorsing their application, which helps preserve a very important historic building in the community.
Any comments? Um, seeing none, I just want to, I'll make a quick, oh, Counsel Kuiper.
Sorry, I just wanted to say, um, that, uh, the, the community church is a lot good for the town that sometimes doesn't get seen and it's nice that we can help them out in a way, um, through this LCHIP.
And I really just want to echo exactly what Counsel Kuiper said. Um, I've had the opportunity to work with the community church in a couple of different ways over the last several years and, um, appreciate the work that, that you guys all do. Um, and anything that we can do to support, um, and endorse this letter, I'm happy to do personally. I'm Counsel Cast.
So I just had a question about the mechanics of the LCHIP. So it's, so it is required. The reason we're being asked is it's required for us to approve it. So we, or endorse it? Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Um, so, um, so since it's endorsement versus approval, I have fewer, fewer questions. I, it's just we have a lot of historical buildings, so, um, uh, like, would there be a, any consideration around which, which ones we'd want to endorse? Like, what would be the thought?
Traditionally, it's, and it's ones that have a significant, um, impact in the community.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if it's, um, if somebody's trying to ref- refurbish for some public good, that's usually part of it. If it's not commercial, um, those are the items. It's about this, like, the guidelines, so it could be most anything.
Yeah.
Um, but, I mean, this, it's, we, since I've been here, this is the only LCHIP application we've had.
Interesting. Yeah. All right, so.
And to put it in also, it's very competitive. Um, there's a lot of, uh, other projects out there from other municipalities across the state, uh, and, uh, organizations that are trying to preserve them.
So this is just to endorse the application, correct? Right. Okay. Thank you.
And if there are any questions about this, the application specifically, there are members of the, um, of the church here to answer them.
Hmm.
So seeing none, um, if you can call the roll.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have no, um, nominations or appointments, so the next item that we have would be, um, resolution, um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash oh three. And I'm going to read this just in name only because it is a lengthy, uh, resolution and it's accepting the report of the Government Operations Committee on Proposed Charter Amendments.
Sure. Pursuant to state law, at the next, uh, town council meeting, you'll have to hold a public hearing on these amendments um, prior to submitting it to the, uh, different state agencies for approval.
Thank you. And that'll be posted as part of the agenda and I think that if, um, just along those lines, because we are, um, only reading it in name only, you know, this, I, this information is all available on, um, the, on our, the town website and in our packets. So Counsel Cast.
Uh, just because we have a joint meeting, is, is our next meeting with the school board, but you mean the next, next regular meeting? Just wanted to clarify that. Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, next regular meeting. Yeah.
Thank you. And that's all we have for an agenda. Um, the next would be correspondence to the town council. Is there any correspondence?
Yeah, none.
And closing comments by town councilors. Oh, Counsel Kuiper.
Um, I, the, the, um, date for the completion of, uh, Leverland Creek hasn't changed, right? It's October first?
We're hoping.
Okay.
Um, what happened, uh, there, there's a little bit of a backlog for the, um, destruction of the culvert, but we're still trying to get it by October first.
Okay, that's the date though, okay.
Completion or road opened by?
Road opened by.
Okay.
Because completion is a little different, yes.
Right. Yeah. Um, seeing, okay, Counsel Finch.
Sorry. I just wanted to make two quick comments on the, the EV charger because I've, I've talked to some, some residents, uh, both in support and opposed to and I just think the concern came from, uh, just more information that needs to roll out. So in terms of, the biggest concern was whether or not this was physically responsible. Uh, I know our town administrator has mentioned some of the, the costs associated with that and I would equate it more to, uh, offering free parking to encourage people to go visit businesses and the library. Um, so it incentivizes people to go out and there's some environmental benefits as well. Um, so I think that's why, uh, why I support it and if it ever gets to the point that it becomes expensive for the town, I'm sure they'll be. Conversation on that. Um, and, uh, likewise, I think it's a little bit different. It's not like you're, you're filling up a forty-dollar tank, uh, with gas. It's going to be a couple of dollars for, for a visit and people will get out and enjoy a great, uh, restaurants and coffee shops and things like that. More important. Library, so, um, uh. Use it if you get a chance and, uh, hopefully, uh, people will see the benefit. So.
Add something like that. Um, just the librarian emailed me today and she has been receiving, uh, donations to go towards the cost of the EV station because of the number of comments that have been made. So, um, just want to appreciate, you know, thank those who I have as well.
And that space isn't a dedicated la, at this point now, because it's the EV charger space, it's not a library space any longer.
No, it's public.
So, uh, I think that there was some confusion about that also. Counsel Sanders.
I saw one comment along with EV charger again about why wasn't this put on a warrant article? So maybe just address.
It's not our form of government.
Right, well, that was the, okay.
Area. It's the council, we're a council administrative form of government in which the council sets policy. Um, if we were at select board town meeting, it wouldn't even be on the warrant because the select board would be able to adopt placing an EV charger on a building. So.
And it's really not even, um, I mean, this is something that the town council, well, that the Energy and Environment Committee, um, definitely pushed and, uh, but the town council didn't need to approve it because it's, it's really, it's incredibly inexpensive.
It was inexpensive.
That was the point, that was the point I was trying to make. It's a small amount of money and it certainly wouldn't, wouldn't warrant having a warrant article.
Good.
It was only, yeah. Right.
Nope. Um, so seeing no other comments, um, at the moment, feel free to chime in, but I just was going to go through some dates. And, um, the first is our joint, uh, school board and town council meeting and that's, um, next week on the twenty-fifth. We're going to meet at six o'clock. We're me, I'm meeting with, Steve and I are meeting with the, um, uh, school superintendent and the school board chair tomorrow and so we'll know exactly where we're going to meet and we'll send that information out, um, after that. And then on the twenty-seventh, I wanted to mention that there's a, um, a ribbon cutting, uh, ceremony at the Stone Church for their new solar array and that's with, um, Revision Energy. And, um, what is it? Four PM, I believe.
Yes.
Um, on October first, there's a presentation here at the, in the auditorium for, um, so, again, solar and, um, making your house, um, energy efficient. Um, sorry, shut that off. Uh, October seventh is the next, um, conversations with the council. That's at six-thirty at the loft. October nineteenth, there's a craft festival at the senior center, um, with a lot of, um, fall and seasonal crafts um, as well as, um, other artisans who will be there. And October twenty-sixth is our budget workshop at nine AM. That's all I have. You mentioned some of the other items, which is a little further into the future, including the, um, deliberative session and, um, voting, which, so the deliberative session is going to be February first and, um, town voting day will be March tenth. That's all I have. Counsel Kuiper, sorry.
I just wanted to say I went to the rec, uh, well, I go to the rec all the time with my son, but, uh, the new swings are in and they look great and they put down some fresh wood chips, so if you haven't been there in a little while, you know, check it out.
Great. Counsel Cast.
Just circling back to some dates that seem far in the future, but because of last year when we had, uh, we didn't have enough people running to fill all the council vacancies coming up, what are the dates that don't know yet? It hasn't been set yet.
Um, I haven't, I don't know.
But, but ballpark, it's in.
It's end of.
End of January.
End of January, okay.
Isn't it usually?
The day, it closes usually the thirty-first, so give it a week before.
And it's, it, it's before the deliberative session that it closes, so.
Right, so.
And it's a two-week window? Something like that?
Ten days.
Ten days.
Ten days, okay, yeah.
Yeah. So I was just going to say if folks are thinking about it, or I encourage people to start thinking about it.
Keep that ten days on your radar.
Right.
So.
Yep, now's the time. So seeing no other comments, um, with that, we are adjourned. So seeing no other comments, with that, we are adjourned.